No worries. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting. This evening is all day, in fact, is Monday, July 11th, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We will start the meeting, actually, before we do that, I just want to make this announcement. The meeting is also being streamed live via Carol Media Center's YouTube channel, as well as the town's Facebook page, which will be available for playback on either of those two platforms. Now, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we begin this evening as we begin all meetings with the opportunity for public comments. I see a lot of familiar faces, those who are going to have a designated time to speak. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to make public comment? Then we will begin with our first order of business, the review and approval of the minutes from our June 21, 2022 Mayor and Town Council meeting. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review. I make a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 21st, 2022.
Thank you, President Carter.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Schofield, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved unanimously. First item of new business is an opportunity for a presentation from Elm Street Development. Elm Street Development is the new owner of the parcel most often referred to as the Integrace Parcel, so we'll begin to call it the parcel formerly known as Integrace, and which is located on the east side of 32 and west of Andor, adjacent to the Warfield property. Elm Street is also the development group of Parkside at Warfield Residential Units, and they have requested an opportunity to provide a preliminary information to the council in advance of any future development submittals to the town. Just want to make a statement here from our staff report for the public to know that the property is currently zoned planned employment center and is designated as a mixed-use, as mixed-use in the Town's Vision 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Will it be Kelly or Jason? Okay, so we're both, okay, great, so you'll both become a commandant. Kelly, since Kelly Schaefer Miller, correct?
Yes.
You're welcome.
Good evening, and it's nice to see all of you in person. I believe that my only appearance before you has been virtual thus far. So it's nice to see you in person. I'm Kelly Schaefer Miller, legally. A lot of people professionally just know me as Kelly Schaefer. I represent Elm Street Development in relation to this property. As Mayor Link just described, I'm pretty sure that all of you are very familiar with the actual location of the property. But Jason Van Kirk, who's with me, as well as Taylor from Elm Street, did prepare a little visual just so everybody could kind of put it in context. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight just for a very basic and concise presentation. The goal is really on our part to just have an open dialogue with the town and start this with an open dialogue. We have had one meeting with Joe and just kind of explained some of our thought process thus far, but we thought it would be beneficial to appear before you to really kind of open the dialogue and also involve you in the discussion and provide you with all the information that you need to be able to answer any questions that might come up as this starts through the process. As Mayor Link introduced in the staff report, Elm Street took title in late April to this property, and I also call it the Integrace Property, so we'll stick with that. In kind of investigating prior to and after having taken title to the property, Elm Street has come to the conclusion that the market potential for this property excludes a lot of the, what was formerly believed to be kind of a retail component for the property. And so it's the intent that Elm Street will, and through me, submit a petition for rezoning to a residential designation. A residential designation would allow for a lot of opportunity on the part of Elm Street to provide some open space. And so we really wanted to engage you in that conversation and hear from you in terms of what you are interested in, what you are looking for, what the town is looking for, what the citizens are looking for. There are a lot of different ways that open space and park area can be provided. It can be public, it can be HOA-owned. There are a lot of different aspects of that, and so that is one of the areas that we are really looking for dialogue and feedback from you, because I know that there have been discussions and mentions in the comp plan about what the town's looking for, but I think it's just to have an open conversation is the best way to go about that. One of the important reasons that we believe that this will not be marketable for retail component is because we have had preliminary discussions with SHA and it is our understanding that SHA is not supportive of any kind of access onto 32. To take it just one little step further than that, the basis for that, according to SHA, is the county priority letter that you all I know are familiar with because it's, it was mentioned in the comp plan and was part of the recent discussions. But that discusses a widening of Route 32. And it's, I don't know that I would say that they explicitly tie the two together, but when I spoke with them, it was kind of their thought process that because the focus is to widen 32, that they are not supportive of any additional access in that area because that is the main priority, the widening of 32. So that is what went into the Elm Street basis for believing that this is, I shouldn't say basis, more than that, for believing that this is not suitable for any kind of intense retail like it was kind of foreseen with the mixed-use development because access will then have to be provided through the existing residential. So that's, just so you kind of understand the background there, that is where Elm Street and I are coming from and looking at this. And so, like I said, one of the biggest elements that Elm Street is looking at in terms of developing this residentially is the potential for the open space component and what can and can't be provided depending on different densities. And so that is one of the primary reasons we're here to talk to you, to get some feedback on that and have a dialogue about that. So I am the presenter for the evening, but that is why Jason and Taylor are here, so that to the extent you have any more technical questions and things of that nature, they are here to answer those, so I will happily call upon them. I do want just to clarify that there is no action, I mean, I believe this was in the staff report, but there's no action being requested tonight. This is, there's been no submittal made. This is purely just the beginning of a dialogue with the town, and we do hope to submit something in the near future, but we do not have anything prepared for submittal at this time.
So, Joe, you're a sunlight spotlight there. I turned and I thought, wow, my future's so bright, you can't even look at me. So I would like to then also present for those that aren't aware, either at this table or in the room, that we too have had some preliminary conversations with SHA. And I might start out by saying that the town is very much in favor of having another point of access on 32, to access the parcel formerly known as Integrace. And I think it'd be in the best interest of both parcels, the Warfield property as well as yours, to have another point of ingress and egress closer to, at the entrance, if you will, of your property. And I think that kind of goes without saying why that would be beneficial for both parcels, for the residents at Parkside, excuse me, that are already there, and then for any new residents to town that might take up residence there at your parcel. And we've also had a conversation with the county with respect to their transportation master plan. So that's different from than I believe what it is that you're speaking of. And that master plan includes almost a rerouting or rerouting, however you prefer to say that word, of Obrecht Road that I think could, would eventually, with its moving of Obrecht Road, it would end up having an intersection or marrying up with Route 32. And probably in a very strategic location with respect to where it would be nice for you all to have a point of access on the other side of the highway. So I think that's important to consider and just for you to know that, like, we are, we want a point of ingress there and egress, another access point, if you will. So we've been doing some preliminary conversations as well. Joe, did you want to speak too? I know we also met with Springfield Hospital Center.
We did, and again, I think, you know, as this process does move forward, as long as we just remain open to the possibility of an access there and to make sure that all avenues are explored before it's just, I don't want to say abandoned, but before we give up the idea of having an access there. As the mayor mentioned, we did have a meeting with Springfield Hospital Center. They have concerns about using Buttercup Road and the cut-through traffic there, and then only having one access for the Parkside at Warfield and then a potential additional residential there on the Integrace Parcel does create a potential for, I guess, safety concerns with only that one way in and out. But again, in our conversations with state highways, we didn't get any kind of indication that it was going to be easy to get an access there on 32, so we do want to make that clear. But at the end of the day, I think continuing those conversations to see if there is some sort of potential to get an access there is still very relevant.
It's paramount for, I think, this body as well.
Can I ask?
Please.
So how long are we talking before we would know the option? And are we losing the Christmas trees on 32? No, if you bring Obrecht out back to where it was.
Further south.
Okay.
On 32 than you're, than it used to be.
You won't lose the Christmas trees.
We won't lose, okay.
Well, and just to be clear, that, the Obrecht Road realignment is, it's basically a paper road right now. There's no official plan for it, it's not funded. It is shown on their, the Freedom District Plan, the comprehensive plan for the Freedom District. But there's no, there's no funding for that just yet, there's, there's.
So it's years out that we're talking of. And so I guess my question, as you all are looking at your process then, is to not, is there an openness to not jumping to and having to change zones immediately, but to look at if there isn't a separate entrance into the property to continue with the zoning is, or is there an intention to not even have that conversation?
I am going to answer that and then really defer to Jason to give his answer, but my answer to that would be if SHA would grant access to 32, and we knew that standing here today, then we might not even be here before you today. The big concern we've had is that as the, the indication we're getting from SHA is that they will not support access there. So it's not that we don't want access there necessarily, it's that we're being told that SHA is not going to give us access there and that in order to get access there, it might be, it's essentially a pipe dream. Like, it might be possible, but it would take so much that it would then make the development of that parcel completely inconceivable. So that's the message we're getting, which is the driving force of saying we need to be rezoned. Because as you all know, the PEC zone requires that percentage variation of residential and then the commercial. And we just do not believe that that site will accommodate commercial without access to 32. And so that's kind of the underlying thing there. So we would also love to get a concrete answer to, one way or another, because without that, we're kind of submitting something to you one way or another, where you're sitting here in the position you are today, saying, well, maybe SHA, and it would be our goal to eliminate the maybe and have one answer, whether it's.
The good thing is, it sounds like everybody involved wants a point of access there. The town, the county clearly is looking to do that at some point in the future from the Obrecht realignment. And, you know, we, I think we need to be incredibly sensitive to the safety of the residential program patients on Springfield Avenue, or at Springfield Center, Hospital Center, who are walking out and about and crossing those streets within the, you know, from Buttercup the whole way out to 32 every day. And the, the traffic there has, the cut-through, as Springfield Hospital Center C-suite refers to it, that everybody does there is, has only increased since the Parkside development and so on. So we can expect it to get worse.
So they've been cutting through this parcel to get to the town? Or to get up to hi, like, the firehouse?
To get out of the development, one way or another.
Traffic is either entering or exiting.
Quick traffic.
No, vehicular traffic is, is, is why the pedestrians that live at Springfield Hospital Center safety is at risk. I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was, so you're saying that people are going out the back way of the Warfield property where it says, "Don't enter, it's a hospital," and driving through that?
Yes. And it's not, it's not just people that live back there.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that's just.
Literally a cut-through, yeah, and so it's a combination of those two things.
Okay, so I have another question. As I look at the map, and I don't know if you can answer it or you can, isn't that where, it looks like there is a road in there where.
It's where the bonsai guy sits.
That's what, right.
But it doesn't cut through, it's just like a little.
But it is a road there.
It's, it's, it's about.
That's a generous description of it.
Probably about 75 feet of a road that goes to nowhere.
But it comes to, all I'm saying is that it opens into, it looks like an opening into, and that's on the property.
Yes.
So that couldn't be widened or used as a.
Well, on my conversation with SHA was, no, that would be a totally change of use because that's a county, what is it, a county maintenance facility or something?
Yeah, it's like, I believe it's a water pumping station.
Okay. So SHA is aware of it, they know it's on the property, this is part of what they told me, and they know that it occasionally gets used, or they believe it occasionally gets used, but that any kind of redevelopment of the property would be a, would be a new use. Like, it's not, it wouldn't be allowed under the current use of what they allow people to use that for.
There's a utility station, and you're saying it's a, so that drive takes the utility people to that station?
Right. Yeah, but I, just as a layperson, you see a road, I mean, it drives out onto the road from there. Yes.
If you click to the second slide, you'll see the ALTA survey, and you'll notice that, I think I have to hand out a few that you might be, you guys might be able to see a little bit better, but up in that corner is that county well easement area that encompasses most of the top of that part of the parcel.
Watch the cord there.
Careful.
Watch the cord, okay.
I think all the time.
Provides you a little better of the detail. So, you know, about three and a half acres of the property is under a 40-year lease to the, to Carroll County. And I did speak with the Bureau of Utilities about that lease, and, and they haven't reviewed the lease, but I've reviewed the lease, I, you know, from the very start, and they pretty much told me they were going to oppose anything over top of their lease. The lease says that they can't go, that we can't do any, we cannot prohibit anything that they want to do on the, on the lease, so I think that that is a, he was a very nice guy. I talked to Andrew Watcher, and, and he basically said, you know, you know, no, we'll absolutely fight you, but do it anything on the, on the well easement area. And that's where that access point is. And at the same time, we had the discussions with SHA. SHA indicated that, you know, that's a access for a pump station. Those are apples and oranges when you're talking about access points versus, you know, true roadways, public roadways, and all the safety things that they look at from, you know, site distance and intersection site distance to stopping site distance and XLD cell and all those sorts of things. So that was from SHA's perspective, they didn't see it as an access point, and certainly from County Bureau of Utilities, they didn't see that as an access point. So that was the, that, that's one kind of restriction of where that property is. And we're still, that goes out to 2039.
So I guess, curiosity question, what made you interested in the property you couldn't have access to except through another development?
Well, the, the other development does have two access points going into the property, and it has two access points leaving the property. There are two access points on Springfield, it's not a single, it's not a single access point community. And so it, there is, there is access for that property. You cannot not have access for a property that, there's some land use law behind that. And so I do view the property as having an access, it's just what do we, us determine.
That you made.
That's correct, yes.
So I guess it seems like then that, that's why I guess I'm curious if there is that interest in continuing with the current zoning versus, you know, setting up that property to, or, you know, you built something that would access, give you access to that, then it seems like.
Part of the original site.
Yeah.
And, and I've had some discussions with Joe in the last couple of months,
a few even before I got Kelly involved too, as to, you know, what retail uses could you drive through residential? And you got to kind of come up with some, get a little creative as to what that might be.
Could you, meaning like, who wants to, like, what residential wants commercial uses driving through? That's what he's saying, not like it's allowed under.
What retail uses or commercial uses would be okay, that you could stand up in front of the community and say that, you know, this traffic is going through your community and we think it's okay because it's, you know, so many, you know, trips per day or this sort of things, or the, you know.
So what did you come up with?
I mean, the only thing that I came up with was, was having a kind of mini-storage type of use. And, and the thought process was that you could go and take a structure on the historic campus and you could build something very similar with the wood, with the brick and the architectural detail. How you outfit it on the inside can be a complete, depending on what it is. You could have a, a storage facility of some sort where everything's indoors and you're not having people there coming in large traffic numbers, but you have a commercial use there. And so that, that was one idea that was thrown out, and I'm certainly open to other ideas that, that could be useful and that all of us could feel comfortable telling the Parkside at Warfield residents that, that this isn't an unusual use to send through residential. Because, I mean, they all bought there knowing that this was zoned PEC right next door. It has two connections on the site plan, one that's built and then one that's paper that are going to be completed when this property gets developed to provide those two access points. And it will feel much more like, kind of more one community than it would necessarily two separate communities, kind of given the, the way the streets tie in, in my opinion.
If it's residential, not if it's commercial?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, if it's PEC, there's going to, there's a component for townhomes as well. So, you know, from a townhome standpoint, I could certainly see it as a, as a kind of Phase 2 of Parkside at Warfield and, and would expect, you know, it to be a very similar look and feel as to what we did next door.
I have a question for Joe. If we, the zoning for both Warfield and this property are the same, can we separate that zoning if we choose to have a different zoning for this parcel than we do for Warfield? Or is it all the same once we change the zoning?
No, I mean, well, anywhere in town, you can change the zoning of any particular parcel if it's determined by the council that it's, it's a relevant change or a necessary change.
Okay, because when we were talking about the text amendment of Warfield, if we change that text amendment, it would affect this property.
Correct.
So if we change the zoning of this property, will it automatically change the zoning of Warfield?
No, because again, they were talking about the text of the zone itself not changing the designation.
Okay, so we can separate those?
Right, because I think what they're going to be asking for is an actual change to the designated zone, not, not just the text that controls the zone.
Okay, just clarifying that, if we change this, it's not going to change that?
Correct.
Okay. Question, I have lots of questions, actually. You had mentioned that three acres has a 45-year?
40-year.
40-year. So that's just three acres that you can't touch right now. What, what's the rest of the acreage?
It's 23.6 acres in total.
Okay. And everybody who is familiar with it, it has a big hill.
Yep.
So if you plan on doing housing there, you would have to change the topography.
Yeah, I mean, we've done some grading studies as to, you know, when we, when we did Parkside at Warfield next door, we had to plan for how the, the streets would tie into that property. We can't just put streets going straight into a kind of a quote-unquote wall. And so both of those roads have been projected to be able to be tied in. The one that's farthest to the north is, is the easiest to tie in. That grade's pretty close to where we have the roadway now. The paper street does have to, you know, it comes up pretty, you know, as much as you can bring a public road up. And, and we have been able to grade in, you know, we started with just using what the PEC zone allows of the two units per acre, and you have 47 units, and we were able to grade it in and, and make it, make it work up in that kind of bottom half of the property, bottom left of the property. And so it certainly has some, some grading activities as we did with Parkside, and, but, you know, we were able to make it work.
Okay. So your grand, this is all, not hearsay, but it's all in the discussion process. Are you planning or would you like to continue with the townhomes? Or do you see other types of homes, like single-family homes and townhomes, a mixture apartments? What are you, what are you foreseeing?
I mean, I think what we saw here is, I mean, we've been very happy with how the Parkside at Warfield has turned out and looks. I love the architectural detail that we kind of stuck with through the HDC and, and all of that. And I, I saw this more as kind of a Phase 2 of that development, more than anything else. I wasn't looking for something denser, like you say, apartments. But I also didn't necessarily see that as the location for single families either. I'm certainly open to ideas around what, what, you know, you guys would want to see there. That's kind of why we're here to have this discussion with nothing submitted, is so that we can have kind of an open dialogue about, about access and what discussions we're having with SHA and other constituents and to try to come up with the best ideas for, for what the property should be.
Okay, so if your idea is to continue Phase 2, which would be all townhomes, approximately how many townhomes could you fit?
So, I mean, under PEC, that, that number is 47 townhouses. You know, from our perspective, if we don't have that access point on SHA or on Route 32, which, you know, SHA has repeatedly told us they don't want that access point for numerous reasons, county priority letter being obviously one of those, but for other points as well. We were talking about asking for a rezon into a residential zone. We've looked at what it would be under, with a, with the small-town zoning guideline overlay very specifically. So if you went R-7500, that would be a total of 76 units that's allowed under, sorry, that's 99 units for the R-7500. You get some bonus options in there depending on how the site layout occurs, so you might have a handful of bonus density units for an R-10,000 zoning change.
I'm sorry, but don't lose your thought, but you need to explain bonus options to the people here in this room.
I'm happy to take that. So again, within our zoning ordinance today, we obviously have residential districts, R-7500, R-10,000, those are basically lot requirements, so that is the number of square feet per lot. We also have a provision for what's, what Jason referred to as the small-town planning guidelines, which allow for denser residential development so long as certain design standards are met within that district. And by doing that, you do get a density bonus, so you can actually go a little bit above what the traditional density requirements would be in that particular underlying zone.
Can you explain how many, how many more units would be there, so like two units?
Yeah, those bonus densities are small, small numbers. It's 2% of a, of the community, it might be one unit if you do, you know, alley-load of garages. I forget all the criteria there. There's several options, but I mean, we're talking about, you know, three or four-unit delta through, through those design characteristics that you guys are trying to encourage through the small-town zoning guidelines. I think the important thing when you look at those small-town zoning guidelines when we say R-7500 or R-10,000, it's not a calculation off of growth acreage. You do an interim acreage, and then you do a net acreage, and you get down on this site to about 19 acres of calculated density. And then you don't multiply by every single square foot there. It's either, you know, by four if it's R-10,000, or by six if it's R-7500. So that's where we get to the, you know, 80 units so for, for R-10,000, 100 units so for, for R-7500.
Did you look at R-20,000, because we have that in our town as well?
I did not look at R-20,000. I think that that would tend to yield exactly where we are with PSC though.
That was the questions that I had, thank you.
So a couple more. So we've just had a town hearing on changing the text of the current zone and heard very loud and clear from a lot of our residents that they were not interested in more dense housing in town. Were you, did you watch those hearings? Were you, did you watch those hearings? Have you? So I, I guess how would we, if we've already heard that, you know, there's a pretty loud voice of not being interested in.
Seventy-one percent to be precise.
Yeah, but this is a hard.
Yeah, so I mean.
For our constituents who, you know, and so I'm wondering, you know, discussion, I would wanna see discussions with. The current Warfield residents who felt, who have said, you know, they felt like this was the last of the build. Um, and were interested, you know, in more housing, the ones that we've heard from town, so.
Yeah, we have not.
I'm concerned about that and then turning around and asking for even more housing in that.
I've not spoken directly with Parkside at Warfield. I wanted this to be our first meeting with you guys. Cuz this is kinda how we wanna um, handle this process. Uh, but, you know, they bought into a community that has two dead end road connections into the property next door. It's the exact same zone as the property that they bought within. I don't know if we told them nobody was developing anything ever again. In the Warfield community, because that's just, I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't true at, at any point in time.
Speaking of, of any more housing in the Warfield development.
Right, but even then, I mean, there was what, I think still twenty-three units of density.
But that, I'm just saying that, but we're dealing with the people who are living next to, and the community that would be impacted by it and. I, I'm just very sensitive to, I feel like we've heard really loud and clear.
We have.
Of expectations of no more residential and so.
Sure.
You know, recently buying the property, knowing that sentiment was kind of with the residents of the area. Like, I'm not sure how we reconcile that to change it or, you know.
I mean, I think there's a couple ways. I, I'm starting out saying what is existing today. And I mean, anybody who bought there that would have looked into it would say there's forty-seven units next door. I mean, that, that's a pretty easy thing to, 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 to.
No one's, no one's questioning me.
Nobody's questioning that.
I mean, I, I think what.
So then, then.
That's not what you're saying.
But just, then just real quick, I, you know, if we're saying it's not forty-seven, but it's some number that might be a little greater. I mean, that's why we're taught here talking about, you know, when you do the zo- uh, um, the. Uh, small town zoning guideline overlay, one of the biggest restrictions of that zone, when you do that is the forty percent open space. And so what do you do with that forty percent open space? And, and I think that we could create a lot better open space. A lot bigger open space, a lot more options of open space than what currently exists within Parkside at Warfield. And whether that is a combining HOAs so that they have access to both, or whether that is a, a um. A town activity that you guys are wanting to see.
Go through the, the townhouses to get to it.
I mean, in.
Correct.
In my uh, estimation, that's what I would, would expect. That's correct.
So any open space that we put on there for access to the rest of the town, you're increasing traffic still, whether it's to a business or to an open space. Through the um.
That's all very calculatable.
Well, that would also be if you wanted to own that open space. That's, that wouldn't be a, we come in with a request and we're forcing you. We're, we're trying to force you to own the open space.
It could be.
So that's part of the, the dialogue and kind of feedback that we're looking for too is, are you interested? Would you, like, would you ever be interested in owning that open space or would it be more beneficial to that area to be an HOA controlled? Amenity for those two developments. Um, you know, one of the benefits of, of Jason being involved in Parkside at Warfield. Is that there is an open dialogue too between that HOA and that, that allows for, that affords that opportunity to kind of have that shared. It's, it's a separate parcel in so many regards, but it's also has the potential to really create this cohesive development in there. Even though it's totally separate from the Warfield, you know, what we know as the Warfield development.
Well, it's separate from, I think the way, like, online on, on a map.
Oh, legally, like from our ownership and from our interest, yes, but when you look at it on paper, it is part of.
I, I agree, we're not gonna look at it and say, oh, that's a separate part, so that's totally different than what we were just talking about half a step away.
Right, and I completely understand that, you know, and, and that is, I think, why the town has looked at this area as a whole. And planning for it, obviously. Um, because even though it is not all the same ownership, it is a cohesive area. Or, or the town envisions it to be a cohesive area, which is why you've included that in your comp plan. But to kind of just backtrack on the question of how do we answer to citizens who are concerned about increased development? I don't have a good answer for you. I, I really don't.
That's why, then that's why, but we have to answer for that and so.
But I mean, that, that being said, other than I don't have a good answer for you, is that I, the reason I practice in the field that I practice in. Is because I do believe that everybody has property rights. And so this property has, will, will, does and will have some kind of zoning designation. Okay, whether it's P E C, whether it's R ten, whatever it is. And so it can then legally develop under that zoning code in some way, shape or form. So I understand that there's a sentiment, oftentimes I see it, as you can imagine, cuz I know you guys see it all the time. I also see it all the time of, we do want this, we don't want that. And I am sympathetic to that because I feel the same way sometimes. I really wanna Trader Joe's, okay? That's like my, please, Carroll County. Um, but I also understand that sometimes the market has to be the driver in some regards. And what develops there. And I actually think that I read that in your comp plan about the, which is interesting cuz I've never heard of this concept. But the, the zoning changes that you're contemplating and to facilitate um. Kind of mixed use, like flex use space, where it's not necessarily use driven, but it's more like structure driven. Which is very interesting and I'm gonna have to research some more. But anyways, that's, that's the way I see it. And, you know, that's all to say that there isn't, there's not a great answer. I mean, somebody, somebody is always not gonna like you. You being us in this case, okay? Somebody is always not gonna like a development, whether it be the best restaurant in town. Because somebody doesn't want it there or whether it be another house. Um, you know, some people just want.
And we, heard loud and clear. So I think, I'd like, I'd love that you're here. I love that you're talking to us. Um, I would love to see us partner ideally to start with the, the state highway. If that's what you're, you know, like to, as opposed to immediately defaulting to.
Yes.
I think that's, that's.
And that's, and that's exactly why we're here, right?
Yeah, and I think that should be the takeaway for um, both parties here this evening is that um. I don't, I wouldn't even wanna entertain a proposal for a change in zoning until it is.
Vet that up.
Yeah, till that is vetted out to the extent necessary to um, completely, you know, rule it in or rule it out.
Well, I appreciate your statement at the beginning, which is, we want an access point. Because that's the kind of dialogue we wanna have. We want to hear that from you so that we know your position. You know, the, the worst place to be in from our, in our shoes is Never Never Land of, we don't know what you're looking for. We don't know what you want. So even, even if we disagree at the end of the day, I still love hearing that sort of statement because that helps us.
To the fact that, that the existing access point, as we've been referring to it, is not truly an access point um, for your sake. And that a true access point would require, you know, an acceleration um, lane and would require a, a, a lot of, a lot of work. Um, but it's necessary in order for, for what's, what we'd like to see happen um, happen there. No matter the development or the, the numbers that go out on, on paper, it, it needs its own access point.
So, go ahead.
With regards to that, it's quite ironic that you're saying that S H A doesn't want one because last year they just granted the um, artery. An access claim, which is brand new. So it, it kinda gives me conflicting information there. Go ahead.
So I guess a question. So, so there are things I think the town wants, right? Um, and when I say the town, I mean the citizenry of the town. We want connectivity, right? And so how do we do more connectivity? There's a great park over there, the Cary Dorsey Park is over there. How do we connect this new community that you're talking about to that community? So that we can go for a two mile walk if we wanna go for a two mile walk. Or um, you know, what other things can you provide as part of this proposal? To make it more of a sell to the citizenry that just told us like a month ago, month and a half ago. We don't want more residential units in that area. Okay, but if we did this, whatever this is, right? And I've heard different things and, and every one of them are controversial. Um, I've heard things where citizens want dog parks. I've heard citizens want pools. I've heard citizens want, you know, a lot better way of getting from downtown. To Warfield, right? Getting from downtown to the rest of the neighborhoods within the town. And I'm, maybe there, and I don't know, I'm just saying, what can you give back to the town? In order for us to be more willing, to be more open to this overall discussion. I also love that you're here today and this shows a spirit of collaboration and coordination. And it's something that I think will mark a really successful future as we move forward. But I do think that there needs to be a give there, which will cut into likely your profits. In reference to us being open and willing, or at least me being open and willing to moving forward past the current zoning. Um, say all that and then I'll say this. You know, if you've been watching any of the hearings or any of these uh, discussions. That we're having an open discussion about possible other things going on with the other property that's right next to you. And so, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna ask the question. I'm dying to know the answer. I'm referencing how much coordination there's going on there. Um, but it's one of these things where, where. We're wanting to take all of this into spirit, right? So one of the things we also heard loud and clear is that we want a small town community feel. It's really important to the citizenry that's here. And we're looking at just for the other property and the other parcels. Possibly increasing by twelve hundred or fifteen hundred people possibly. So we wanna know that, right? We wanna understand what the impacts will be and what this whole thing will look like. That's some of the things I know that I'm taking into consideration. As we're starting to make decisions. One, the takeaway that I would have in terms of having more communication back with, with us. Is again, what, what is it that you can provide back to the town to be able to help sell? Going from forty-seven to some other number, whatever that other number is.
And that's exactly, you know, that's exactly our thought process here as well. I see, you know, talking to the Parkside residents as well as the rest of the town, you know, you have forty-seven and mixed use. But, you know, okay, you know, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll have a crystal ball. S H A happens or it doesn't happen. But irregardless of that, necessarily that answer to that, you know, if there's, do you want the commercial here? Kind of in behind the townhouses or not, or would you prefer, you know, let's do some amenity package. That, that is, is uh, either HOA based or possibly town based. Cuz I do think that the Cary Dorsey Park um, is really nice and, and, and could use a more active component. To the, to the park. And I think, I, I think that north side of the property creates a opportunity. Um, to create some of those more active parts, parts of the park. I, I like dog parks, but I know a lot of people don't. So we'll kinda just throw that one off to the side. But I mean, there can be a lot of options that you go to. We've, we've gone into communities where we do big pavilions and grill stations and fire pits and, you know. Play bigger tot lots and, and things like that. Um, I mean, there's any number of different options that we could look at for, from an amenity standpoint. That I think would be enticing to the, one, the current residents in that neighborhood. Being Parkside at Warfield in combination with new residents, see it as a positive as to what, what they are gonna be ultimately. Have access to walking distance to their townhomes. And then whether, whether the town wants to be involved in that or not. As to whether that could be a town, uh, a town option uh, for everybody in the town to be there, I think is, is, is one of the questions in our mind. That, that kinda brought us here today as well. Um, because you're exactly right and that's where our thinking is, is what, what. What offers does it make sense to um, to, to put in this area? So that it makes a, the, the best community possible.
And what I would follow up with is that, based on the discussion that we just had with the community. Um, you know, I mean, a lot of people showed up, you know, three, I don't know how, what the actual count was, but, you know, it looked like a few hundred people anyway. And all of them pretty much had the same opinion as Mark said. I don't think, I don't think the community is willing to budge. This soon after that without something, right? And I think my opinion is that it's not just something for those residents that. You know, are across the street, per se, across thirty-two, but it needs to be something for the entire town. So if you're asking me my opinion. I think whatever you come up with needs to be something where the entire town can benefit from it. Because the entire town showed up for that particular discussion.
The entire town would be affected by.
That's right.
That density that was being imposed.
Well, and I also just wanna jump in quickly because I think sometimes it gets overlooked too that this rezoning would really be the first step here. This would still be subject to a full site plan, at which point there would be traffic impact analysis, you know? It would be the, the grading, all of those things would have to, you know, pass the code, be approved through staff, all of those steps. And also would offer an even more kind of concrete opportunity to say, we want a public park. We want this kind of park and, you know, be designated that way on the site plan. Um, there are some, you know, restrictions as you go through the rezoning process on what you can and can't, what we can and can't do. Um, we being us and you, town. Um, but through the site plan process, that really opens the door to those sorts of things. And so that's why, you know, it was Jason and I's intent to start the process now in this way. So that this could be an ongoing fluid conversation. Because the goal here, and just to be clear, I think you guys understand this, is that if we were to get a rezoning. And something were to substantially change in terms of density, that you're not just gonna see a plan that comes in that's totally different from what we've ever informally shown you before. You know, this is supposed to be, we want this to be an open conversation through that process. Um, not to be a surprise sort of thing where you get something on your desk and now citizens calling you going, I heard this is happening. Uh, you know, that's what we're trying to avoid. It's just being clear and open from the get-go. Um, and, and so, but the site plan process will guide a lot of those sorts of more. Very specific, I guess, elements, if you will.
And, and I'm not asking necessarily for very specific.
Right, right.
There need to be some options and you need to show some of the visioning for what is going to occur. Because if you don't, then everyone, it, it's a surprise no matter what we do.
Right.
And I would say the average citizen doesn't understand all the different steps that are gonna need to happen between now. And getting to your.
Shovel and durb, right, yeah, absolutely.
Right, and so that, if we, if, you know, one of the things in order to be successful from my vantage point is you show us your vision. Right? And then we get to contemplate it a little bit. And sure, things can change when you get into the site plan and along that process. But I think it would be helpful to the citizenry of the town and to us, if you can show us what that looks like a little bit from your perspective. And it's like, I, I see the hill. Does that mean that homes are on top of the hill and I can see them from how far away? And, you know, what does that mean, right? And from a, a, you know, like the, how the town is. Now, when you drive past Raincliff and you drive past Warfield even, sure, you can see them. But there's big burns and hills that hide a lot of the different features uh, of those properties from a lot of different viewpoints. And so how does that play into some of the magic that you're trying to do as you're thinking through your development? All those visioning exercises I think are really important as we contemplate what the future would look like.
Right.
And there's basically only two zoning, rezoning that, that you're thinking of is seventy-five hundred and ten thousand. Because you said that twenty thousand is basically what it is now.
Those are the two that we've investigated. Um, if you have other suggestions on what you'd like to see there, we will certainly go back. And after this, take a look and, you know, see what we can and can't do there, whether we think it fits, all of those sorts of things. But those are the two that we've investigated.
Okay, and then on top of what Jeremiah said, maybe if those are the two kinda options that you were, just do a, a brief overview. Of, okay, if we said we approved R seventy-five hundred, this is kind of the concept. With everybody knowing that it could change, but it's the concept. And then this is the concept for R ten thousand. That might be helpful for, it, it would definitely be helpful for me to determine which is more palatable.
I appreciate the feedback, thank you.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing a concept that is uh, mixed use uh, with a, with an access from thirty-two as well. I mean, I, I don't, I, 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 I know we're talking about residential because that's what you guys came here to speak about. But I think that the body is also very much interested in a mixed use development in both parcels. And we have not given up that ghost. Um, and so I think that's a good take home message for you.
Well, and what I've gathered from tonight's conversation is that that's our starting point. Because before we prepare any kind of concept plan showing residential, it sounds like that's a conversation that we need to have with the town and with the S H A. And kind of vet that out together and so that then we have a starting point. Because until then, we frankly, we really don't have a starting point. Um, and I, you know, to the extent S H A can.
Well, you would have a starting point, it would be to build the density you have available there in residence. Well, you could have a starting point, our would be to build the density you have available there in residential. And it, i- if that's what you're willing to do with the connection through Warfield, if you, through Parkside, if you don't that gap an access point. That's also an option. And a, and a lot of open, a lot of open space and amenities for the, for the residents of Sykesville. If I had my pipe dream, but.
So, so with seventy-one percent of the people telling us that that flavor of ice cream that somebody else was selling, they didn't want. You're gonna have to come up with a much better flavor for us to suddenly wanna buy it, which is not impossible. However, the fact that you've come here and have an open dialogue makes me, to begin with disinclined, however. Because you're coming here in an open dialogue, I'm much more sympathetic and have an open mind. I'm looking for more specifics, obviously not, not blue plants with a shovel underneath, but you know what I mean? I'd like to see a little more before I get excited, but it could be done. To reinforce what the mayor said, cause I think that's what a lot of us want. We don't wanna give up yet on what we had asked for. So I would ask you to think outside the box, think wide, and maybe you'll come up with something that'll make everyone happy.
Yes, and we, I will appreciate the town's involvement too in the S H A discussion as well.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we, the other thing we heard loud and clear was that the citizens want transparency. And they want people working together and not adversarial relationships and so.
We saw that.
I noticed that comment, I heard that comment. Um, yeah, and so I think, you know, to your benefit of coming, the difficulty is. You don't, you are not part of the other discussion.
Yes, but we're gonna get lumped.
But the town, the citizens are not gonna see a difference. And so I think the, the more it can feel different, the more we can do it in the open with everybody, working together. Even if it is, well, what about this, or I'm not sure about that, or, yeah, I think the transparency is huge.
And I'll, and I'll wrap the conversation up here, it's, it's, um, uh, ten till, till eight. Um, I think what you have going for you at this point is that the public has already spoken. And everything that I knew they already felt, and I think most people at this table already felt, could not be proven until it was expressed. And so there's no question, there's no room for anyone in a developer's position to wonder if that's just seven people saying that? Or if we're really representing what the people want? And so that's where we have to, I, I, I would plead with you all to keep coming back to that. Because you, you see how we're going to react, um, to a, a, a proposition that is, um, not in keeping with what the people want, so, okay? Cool, thank you, anyone else? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Excellent, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Would you like your fans back?
They're for you to keep.
I mean, you can keep them or.
As long as you don't, unless you wanna hand them back to me.
Call them up some mail.
Promise to recycle them.
I've been to keep mine.
Thank you.
I'll keep, I'm gonna keep mine.
All right, we can move on to our next item of new business, which is item number two to consider and discuss only. Zoning text amendment for signs. Um, that pertains to chapter one eighty, article fourteen, uh, special provisions, section one eighty to, one, one eighty to one eighty-nine. Called appropriately signs. Um, at the last town council meeting, uh, on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, there was a request by the council for staff to look into the town's existing sign regulations. As they relate to the size of certain temporary signs in historic district. Um, via that review, staff, uh, can report that the town's ordinance does not appear to have been significantly modified since two thousand and four. And in fact, contains several content-based regulations that are no longer enforceable. So staff has developed an initial list of modifications for us to discuss this evening. And I will repeat, there will be no formal action taken this evening on this item. Uh, but likely at our next meeting in August, any modifications to the zoning text will be proposed and presented as it will need to be. Um, in order for the amendment to be formally referred to planning commission for reporting recommendation. So now that we're on the same page, Joe, you wanna talk about some of those, um, modification options?
Sure, and, and again, we can blame this all on, uh, Council member Grassley. Uh, can and will, as, as most of you know, or if you.
So it'll be the Grassley amendment.
Right, exactly, oh, yeah. Um, so I'll, uh, let everybody know that, uh, when it comes to zoning ordinances and specifically signage. Uh, my own personal belief is that signage is the black hole of planning, so we can get lost in signage real, uh, real quickly. So again, uh, trying to keep all of these conversations on as high of a level as you can without having to dive into the, I guess, the weeds of each of it. Um, I'll tell a story about, uh, a, a sign ordinance that I used to have to attempt to implement, had footnotes to it. And then the footnotes had footnotes to it, just to give it all the, so again, just to get.
Courage.
Talk about how crazy sign ordinances can actually get. Um, uh, ours is actually pretty straightforward, uh, today, it's only, uh, roughly four pages. But, uh, and just doing a quick analysis of it, uh, there are several, uh, references to content-based, um, uh, regulations. And again, when we talk about content-based, we're talking about the difference between, oh, well, this is a real estate sign and we're gonna treat that differently than say, an election sign or, or something else. So just so everybody kinda is aware. And right now, you, you can't designate different types of signs that way. Basically have to, you can create different regulations within a district, but the sign itself has to be, uh, it has to be neutral to the content that it contains. So again, you can say a sign in this district can be no more than say, six square feet, but you can't say, oh, real estate sign can only be four or something along those lines. It's gotta be consistent. Um, so again, elimination of, of all the content-based, uh, regulations within the entire ordinance. Uh, proper definitions of, uh, both temporary signage, permanent signage, permanent off-premise signage is, is important. Because there are, uh, areas within town, uh, that we do allow, uh, some display of things that aren't necessarily on that particular site. And then, uh, uh, size, sized requirements. And this is likely gonna get a little complicated, just how we end up having to do it. Because we would likely wanna limit the temporary signage size in historic district maybe a little differently than say, uh, out at Miller Cooper Park. Which, uh, you know, it's, it's a little bit higher speed, the signs have to be a little bit bigger if you're gonna display those next to a roadway. So again, we can work through some of those issues. Uh, and then clarification, in, in our ordinance, there's actually a section that talks about location and maintenance regulations. And those are kind of all over the place, but really what we wanted to go through is, uh, uh, talk specifically about, um. Uh, the different types of either permanent on-premise signs or permanent off-premise signs and, and establish some specific regulations for those. So again, that was kind of a brief overview of what we were anticipating to have to go through that sign ordinance and do. Uh, but what we wanna do is make sure, the reason it's on the agenda tonight is to make sure there weren't other, uh, potential concerns or things, uh, that the council had. Before we started to dive in and really do a red line of the document before we're ready to, uh, send this to planning commission for review.
Joe, I just wanna make sure, and you touched on it, that whatever changes are done in the sign ordinance, that it, um, either is the same as historic district. Or we have to change that as well, to make sure that they're both aligned.
Yep, and really, some of the, some of the regulations we're talking about are involving temporary signage. Which, uh, both the historic district regulations as they exist today are more about permanent signage and there's not a lot of regulation on temporary, which is why.
From a historic district commission perspective.
Well, even from a, just a regulatory, an overall regulatory perspective of the town.
But if we're gonna be making decisions in this amendment, uh, that we're discussing only this evening.
Correct.
About temporary signage, it's kind of out of the purview of the H D C temporary signs.
Correct.
But I do hear you with respect to.
Yes, and then maybe we can have like an antidote with the historic district guidelines and say that we don't have purview over, if it's not already there.
Temporary sign.
Temporary signs.
Yeah.
That way, if somebody comes to us, well, that's not us.
Yep.
And the definition of a temporary sign is already noted too, so, yeah.
Can, can I ask you, and, and maybe this is something you're going to, um, raise when you define what temporary sign is. Let's say someone's doing a protest downtown.
Correct.
Is that a temporary sign? Let's say they have a huge Black Lives Matter sign.
Yep.
That they wanna put up, let's say, you know, just huge, right, way more than six square feet. Is that a temporary sign or not a temporary sign?
What do you mean put up?
Like have, have one, you know, you maybe hold there and.
But it would go with them when they left.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
And so is that a temporary sign, is that a?
Right, and those are the kinds of things, exact, that, that exact issue was one of the things that we've already started to at least contemplate with. How do we make these regulations so that if there is a protest in town, cause again, we don't wanna discourage protesting. And we certainly don't wanna discourage people bringing signs to protest, that's usually what happens. Uh, is that we have to make a regulation that's both workable and reasonable. So that if, uh, say during a protest, somebody doesn't try to bring a, like a giant billboard with them. That would potentially, you know, block a sidewalk or a road or cause a distraction if somebody's driving by. So again, we have to be conscious of those, but I think we can make a regulation that would allow for, uh, reasonable accommodations for even protesters downtown.
And then banners, we have, and I, I saw something in there that referenced banners, but we have wonderful festivals. We've got these beautiful signs that we put in our town. Um, are they gonna be allowed? Cause they're, they're way bigger than the six square feet.
Right, right, and, and again, there would have to be some, uh, uh, some offset for the banner location that's in town. What you can do, one of the ways that you can do that is you actually designate that a banner site. So that, um, you can create a regulation that's specific for that area, at least within the historic district. Now maybe, maybe banners are allowed outside of the historic district wherever, wherever you want. But within the historic district, you could say, there's this one banner site and here's the location of it. And that particular site is allowed to be X size.
And so I, I haven't brought this up to the council, but when I was in a small town in West Virginia, we saw some really beautiful hanging signs. With kind of a banner sign you throw off of a light post. And I've heard challenges with putting anything on our light posts. Which is a different matter altogether and we don't need to talk about that. But these were, these were beautiful things that they were celebrating, either military folks, in this particular case, they were celebrating, uh, some high school graduates that were belonging to that town. And so when we were at M M L conference, I went and I talked to a guy that builds these things and so, you know, got some information. They're also bigger than six square feet, believe it or not. And so as I'm thinking through this and not wanting to limit the potential of that being able to happen, cause it's a nice thing to do in the community, for the community. You know, I'd like to keep in mind those sorts of things. The banners, the school banner things, you know, Lisa and I had a conversation in reference to it. Um, we both liked the idea, I don't know how we get it done, that's a different matter. And then, uh, protests, and I'm, I'm strong on the protest issue. Uh, I didn't like how the noise ordinance came out because of some of the language for it. I'm gonna be coming back to that issue for the protest signs, uh, as we comb through this document, just so you know.
Yeah, and why, and again, just to say that the six square feet was, uh, a suggestion for now.
Sure, and that's a good sign, that's probably a good size for almost everything. But there's some things that are out there that I just, we need a little bit of wiggle room, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing up, I mean, that was, as you were speaking, that was what I was thinking of, the military signs and the recognition that. I'm working on some contacts to figure out, you know, who we can partner with for that, but then finding the, the location in town and. If it's not Miller Cooper, it's historic district, so, um, you know, making sure that that's allowable and encouraged and supported is gonna be really important.
Yeah.
For every ordinance that we make or that are on the books, the town also has to abide by those same ordinance, we're not exempt.
Correct.
Okay, so if we had town-owned banner signs, whatever, we still have to abide that.
That's right.
Okay.
Three foot by, three foot is safe.
That's kinda small.
Because I was thinking that with.
I would think three by three would be.
There might be an exemption to it because if we own them, but.
It's a square, again, it's, it's, it's all open.
I know, it's the black hole of regulation.
Right, we could talk all day about the specific.
Let's not, yeah, let's not.
So my only concern is.
The Grassley amendment.
Just a big sign. There's some big signs over here and I really would like it to be very clear. So it's like, if somebody's in violation of it, you can point to a text and say, look, this is in violation, this is why it can't be done. And I just wanted for the historic district, that was really all I wanted. But I'm glad that we're taking care of some ambiguity, whatever.
Ambiguity?
Ambiguity in the, in the, uh, in the, uh, code, so. So just so you know, I'm not opposed to large political signs, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, just, just in the historic district, I just.
I'm not, I, I don't think it's necessarily a problem that is worth a solve right now. Uh, there's, you know, I, I remember losing, uh, first election I ran to, um, and I, uh, came in last. And the person right before me had the biggest sign, uh, that you could possibly have just up the hill on Sandusky. And I was sure that that was one of the reasons why he got just, he edged me out just a little bit. And I was like, you know what, dreaming about a huge sign at some point, so.
You won't be able to do it.
Eighty feet by ninety feet, right?
That's right, see it from my house.
And maybe there's a.
See it from space.
May, uh, maybe there's a, a timeframe for, um, certain heights and sizes of signs.
So I mean.
I, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know either, but like if we have signs, we have signs in town now that really don't have anything to do with the Sykesville, uh, election. That I'm like that, I just think it's too big, so.
Um, I believe that historic district has a time limit on temporary signs, I believe it's thirty days.
I don't remember what it is, but it's certainly less than ninety, let's put it that way. If it's thirty, sixty, or ninety, it's definitely not more than that.
So who keeps track of that though?
Well, there, you, a person like yourself, Mr. Grassley, who would come to the town and say. To the zoning administrator.
Yeah, that's, that's also the problem with temporary signage, is there's an permit requirement, which we don't wanna create a permit. For a temporary sign, so again, when does the clock start?
It's the event horizon of that black hole, yeah.
I mean, and, I'm, I have a problem with yard signs just because how wasteful they are. Um, there are certain yard signs I've seen throughout this campaign season that were thoughtfully created with literally, it's, it's thin cardboard. It's, it's, you know, biodegradable paper. Um, and it's not the, uh, the, the single-use, impossible-to-recycle plastic, the Coroplast. And so, I mean, that's, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about today with regulations regarding size and length of time that they're permitted. And whether it's the historic district or across the board throughout the, the, within the limits of, of town. Um, but, you know, uh, yard signs are, are perhaps a, a, another footnote or something that we need to discuss. I don't know if there's anyone else that takes issue with the way they litter up our, um, our landscape. And it's seemingly, you know, not just campaign season, um, it, it's becoming more and more of a, of, of an issue, um, I think. And then they're not collected and when they are collected, there's nothing to do with them, but with them in the landfill. And so I see them as litter, to be honest.
So like, again, I just want some wiggle room because some of, I, I don't know what you consider the things that get put up, say for Halloween. Some could argue that a big huge sign that says Happy Halloween is a sign. And I think it's one of the nicest things we have in our communities, to be able to walk around and all kinds of communities come in. Because, you know, we're just a great town to come to for that season.
Sure.
Like happy birthday things, I've seen those.
I think the good thing about, you know, uh, holiday decorations is, is there's always another holiday, so they're not up for too long.
Right, no, they're not, thank God.
But it's, it's the, it's the perpetual yard sign, it never goes away until it's, uh, the wind does its, has its way with it. And then it's, the wire's broken and it's flying around, you know, and into the, into the river and it's a problem. So, uh, you know, it's, it's how conscientious, um, we want to, to be about certain stuff.
True.
Whether or not that's, uh, something worthy of, of looking into and discussing further.
Joe, do you think you got enough information on this amendment?
That's excellent.
I don't want any more information.
The Grassley amendment continues.
Just wanted to size, it's all I wanna do is decide, so.
But you're talking about the size of the yard.
The Grassley horror.
Well, no, just, just in the, uh, just in the, uh.
In historic district, so basically it would be in, in, it would mostly be in, on private property, obviously. But it would be in very visible locations, why else would you put a sign up if you couldn't see it? And, um, I, I do agree that, you know, it can get to be too much when there's, you know, several signs.
And, and the reason why I wouldn't wanna just brush over it, and why do you think it's important? Is that it's a way to show freedom of speech. And to me, that's a really important thing. And diversity of opinion and thought is what makes, you know, our town great, our nation great, all of that. And that's why it's, I think it's worth a really healthy discussion and I really appreciate the fact that you brought it up. Um, and maybe it was focused on size, but here I'm thinking that, hey, if you've got a ten by ten foot sign, well, maybe you're really trying to make a point, I don't really know. And so those are, those are just some of the aspects of it that are important to me.
And, and if I'm being honest, if there's, that, that, since there is no, um, permit process for a temporary sign. Um, whether it be to advertise a yard sale or a campaign or selling a house or what have you. Um, the problem for me is that they're not collected when there's, the end, the end of the use has, has, has approached and they remain. And then. and they remain. And then whose responsibility does that become to clean them up and to remove them and to properly dispose of them? And I don't know if that's even something that, I mean, obviously, if it's a campaign sign, the person's name is on it, so you know whose property it is. But I, I don't know. Again, just kind of food for thought and things to consider.
Well, but it, it's the, wouldn't it, sorry, even if a name's on it, if it's in private property, wouldn't it be the property owner's responsibility?
Yes, if it's on private property. But they also end up in the right of ways and on what would be considered not private property a lot during this time of year.
With this discussion about size, if, if we have a certain size that's allowable, I think that you also need to have a limit to those signs. Because I could be a five by five. I'm within my limit, but I can have a hundred of them right in a row. They're my sign, so.
Each has a line.
Or I could just have the same thing. There's, there's a campaign corner that I've seen. It's the same sign and it's
Yeah, six of them, right next to each other.
Well, actually, I thought that there was more of them up on the corner, not in town. But I was like, well, you need to have a limit within space distance because if you're trying to eliminate the size, okay, well, I already have my size, but you didn't tell me how many I can put up.
Well, I, I think we get kind of the rabbit hole you were talking about, and then enforcement, you know, like, and then what? Like, so you
Grassley's fault.
Who's, what?
Grassley's fault.
I said, we are in the rabbit hole. We're in the rabbit hole.
Yeah, but I, you know, it's
We've crossed the event horizon.
Or the more, you know, then we're talking about an enforcement nightmare. And who's doing that and whose responsibility? And do we want to spend all of our town resources on managing signs, sizes?
Your full-time job, isn't it?
I mean, size might be important to some people.
I mean, I
Well, it would be complaint-driven, probably.
Yeah, it would be.
Like a councilman complaining about the sizes?
I think I've got her in the rabbit hole. Please, thank you. Yes, I know.
I made a promise before I came over here today for this meeting that this is probably going to be one of our record-breaking short meetings, but clearly I was mistaken. But no, that was good. Those are thoughtful comments. And, and thank you for bringing it up, Councilman Grassley. So for our announcements and reports,
That's a lot.
The next meeting is scheduled, our only one in August, in fact, for Monday, August eighth, twenty twenty-two. And we continue to have volunteer opportunities available on the Historic District Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, Police Auxiliary, and Police Auxiliary. Anyone interested? Do not hesitate to email town@Sykesville.net for more information about these volunteering opportunities. Staff updates begins this evening with the Treasurer's Report with our Treasurer here, Mr. Craig. Thank you.
He is the most fashionable employee that we have.
Yes.
He is that.
Obviously, I have two little signs that I'm making a note now to take down.
I have, I have
I'm just trying to stop people from like, not cleaning up every dog. That's all I wanted to do. It was a little sign.
But that, that indicates the need for another ordinance to be enforced, right? Like, yeah. So I appreciate that sign. Yeah.
But I agree, they can't stay there forever. So, just apologize. Well, good evening, everybody. At this time, I'd like to present the June twenty twenty-two Treasurer's Report, the last report for fiscal year twenty-two, yeah. I know I just emailed it at like noon today, so I greatly apologize for the delay in that. And obviously, I'm sure you didn't have great lengths of time to digest all the information that's in there, so.
I did that.
I'm going to briefly hit the highlights, you know, and then when you all have an opportunity to review, you can certainly reach out to me with questions or whatever else. I'd be more than happy to.
We understand the end of the fiscal year push, so, and the, the delay in getting it to us, it's a lot.
Well, then, and I have five days.
Yeah, well, and that, you did go in. You deserve it.
Yeah, anyway, in terms of the revenue, that's just a small glimpse of it, but we've pretty much hit every pocket. You know, we met or exceeded basically the budget on every revenue item, which is really good. There's a few exceptions at the moment, such as franchise fees. And another one was, yeah, the state aid for police protection out there. Just because we haven't gotten the fourth quarter payment yet. I mean, it's certainly going to be coming, and then we'll exceed those as well, which is really well. I can't, our budget process is obviously working very well, so then we're going to meet that so nicely. Obviously, the highlight there is the, the income tax that Joe likes to see, too, that we're way above the budget and we're kind of crushed. So that was really a good year for that, so. In terms of the expenses, everything is really like, pretty close to how we budgeted again. I mean, it was like nothing really that became unfavorable. Everything pretty much met what we expected. The only small glitch was at the very bottom, you can't see this, but there was a new dependant. And it was the last Treasury report, the latest Treasury report, that, I wasn't here, sorry, that was dealing with the ARPA funds. Obviously, we had some ARPA expenditures that we did not budget quite. There was a little small glitch in that, that we didn't quite catch that, so. But really, it's just a matter of moving cash, increasing the line item in our fund balance, which will actually wind up being adding a revenue line item, which will actually be a favorable thing. It's that we missed that. So right now, it looks like it's coming out of general operations, which we don't want that. We obviously have funds, you know, like one point, you know, six million dollars sitting there to be used, with more funds evidently around the corner coming, so. So that'll be fixed, obviously, for the audit. I'll have to address that issue, so. He'll clean up. But that's the other thing. Obviously, the report here is not going to be final, you know, until the audit, which will be going in the fall, so. In terms of the check register, again, I know you didn't have really a chance to look at it. And most of the expenses were the usual expenses, nothing to worry about there. And the only two big ones is we had the Chesapeake Employers, which is our Workman's Cop Insurance. For the first time, we decided to pay the whole thing at once, so you'll see that on the report for like almost forty thousand. Usually, we pay that in installments, but we decide we have the cash, save some finance charges, so we paid it all off. So that's the forty thousand. Also, you'll see a Cityscape container for about eleven thousand, which we purchased about eight new large rear-load trash containers for commercial use that Derek needed. What's not listed in the check register, but which is in the report, are the new trash cans and recycle, whoa, and they're underway any minute now, to your house, to a house close to you. Hopefully, you don't have a sign next to it, that I had to accrue the expense, but the expense will be paid for very shortly in the next, probably a couple of weeks. It'll be on the check register for the July, well, in the July report, but it's not in this report. But obviously, the expense side is in there, so you don't have to worry about that. Other than that, I didn't, I felt, you know, it's probably one of the cleaner, even though it's a year-end. Usually, the year-ends get to be messy, and I felt like this is actually a really good year-end way to end the year. So obviously, I'm looking very forward to the next fiscal year to start, which has. And obviously, I have to get the budget out to everybody. I know the chief's been acquiring for that information, so that's my next project. Like I said, I'm sure you don't have too many questions at the moment, but if you think of any, or like, come by, you want to kick my sign off my lawn?
I just want to let you know that our end of year ended June thirty-first.
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth, I'm sorry. Only thirty days in June, thirtieth. And you have provided us with the end of year on the eleventh day of July.
So you shouldn't really be beating yourself up that you didn't give it to us before today's meeting in time for us all to review with a fine tooth comb, I think, as what President Carter was saying.
I'm thoroughly impressed with the efficiency.
Thank you, thank you. It's gotten to be a pretty smooth operation. I have to submit, we're doing pretty well over here in the town.
Taking on top of things, makes the end of year report.
Sorry, some of us likes the weekend, obviously, review this stuff. Ruined his weekend. I ruined his weekend.
Got a week to look at it now.
It's true, it's true. I'd be here all the week, so.
So no comments or questions for Greg? All right.
Thank you much, Greg.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Questions forthcoming in emails, I'm sure. Great. Next to the pulpit is Chief Salving to preach, please, sir.
Yes.
All right.
The diocese, the pope.
It will be. It's very hard to follow such a smooth operator, and that's great, but I will do my best. The Public Safety Report covers, as you can see, almost a month, June thirteenth through July fourth. Six hundred and fifty total events. Just a few highlights. We had eighteen assist other agency, eight community policing events, only four fireworks complaints, which is pretty good.
It was the rain. That's not giving too many credit, too much credit.
We're not taking credit, but we're thankful.
Thankful, for sure.
Three hundred and sixty-one patrol checks and twenty-two traffic enforcement initiatives. We did have quite a few incident reports during this period, as, as you may have seen in your, in your packets. Twenty-one, to be exact. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, or two, maybe three. Report number one oh four, Chief. Was this during hours of operation? It looks like the time was before five P.M. Was, was the store open?
It was. It was broad daylight.
Yeah.
And five or six juvenile females had stolen from several places within town. Due to the quick response of, I believe, Kirchner, Sergeant Kirchner and Officer Schlerth, all of the stolen merchandise was recovered.
Good.
Yes, it was a great job. The shop owners elected not to pursue charges. So we took a report, returned the merchandise, and end of story.
Have you ever had an experience like I've seen on television when I was growing up, where if the shop owner decided not to press charges, there was some less, um, pennants that needed to be done than
Painting, maybe?
Something.
Wax on, wax on, yes, sir.
Those type of informal mediation-type things are, are encouraged. But, you know, we still could go forward with charges. However, it doesn't make sense to tie down the court system if you have shop owners who don't wish to proceed, don't want to show up to court, that sort of thing, so. In the end, it was, you know, a good, good resolution.
Okay. All right, thank you. And report number one oh six, where there was a, a dog-on-dog fight. Were these dogs on leashes?
They were. And one was a pit bull and pulled the young lady, just pulled her, right. Dog had, had things on his mind and, and she was going along for the ride, so. Uh, yeah, unfortunate. Nothing severe, but there was a bite. And we're going through the process there with, you know, the whole nine yards.
And the other dog was fine?
Yeah.
And the woman?
It was a pit bull and a shepherd.
I'd want you to lie to me if that were not true. I just wanted to know about the leashes. Um, good. And my last question is report one ten and one twelve. There are both damage done to property. One, I guess, was some graffiti on the tunnel on Route thirty-two. And the other was to the stone house at South Branch Park. Was that also graffiti or what was done?
No, they broke, um, there's some windows on that stone house with wire mesh and broke through several of the windows.
I have recently learned about this double-walled Lexan material, and I guess Lexan's not the right word, polycarbonate, that are meant to protect historic windows, and it's virtually see-through and virtually unbreakable. I don't know how many of those windows are even spared at this point, if they've all been busted, but it might be something worthy of us looking into if there's any left to save. The historic windows are obviously an important component to the historic building, yeah.
I know, I believe Officer Schlerth contacted you about that, and I guess we have to go through Howard County, right, because of the, we don't
They're, they're completely boarded up at this point.
No, we are planning to put a camera at that location, which will help when the time comes and hopefully prevent some of these malicious acts. And I will tell you, it's not on this report, but we had another report of vandalism that just occurred last night down in Sykesville Station's lot. One of the, one of the tractor-trailer trailers was, graffiti was sprayed on it, so. Hope we're not going to go through that again, but we'd certainly ask the public, please keep your eyes out for anyone that's mostly kids. Obviously, they're doing this sort of thing. If you see kids out and about beyond curfew or they're out with, walking around with spray paint cans, please, please let us know.
So I think that answers my last question, which was regarding these two vandalism and now this third. I assume that there was, or when you see on the report, the PSR, that, that the last column, like there's, um, a description, I guess, is that an actual charge? Like, were these individuals, the perpetrators?
That, that's what the charge would have been, but
Okay, so that the perps weren't, okay.
They weren't apprehended in, in either of these cases.
Thank you, Chief. That's the end of my
I just had one thing, not a, a question, just a thank you. I saw Sergeant Kirchner out on Route thirty-two when that three-car accident occurred. He was standing on, like, he was like right in the middle of the road, a very dangerous place. And cars were going by. I slowed way down. I didn't know really what to do. And I wasn't sure what he wanted me to do, honestly. Every now and then that happens, but I can only imagine how fast some of the cars were going by him. So just want to say thank you, Dan.
I'll pass that along. One of the most dangerous parts of the job is being on a highway with high speed, especially at night with lack of visibility. Hopefully, he was wearing his high-visibility vest, but it's very dangerous. That's one of the areas where most police officers are killed, struck by vehicle. Anything else?
Thanks, Chief.
And I apologize for not being here last time. Hopefully Lieutenant Kilgore did an adequate job in my absence.
For the torch, well for you.
Glad to hear that. Proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to staff report from Mr. Joe.
Just a few quick items, as I'm sure most of you heard. The new carts, new trash recycling carts are being delivered.
I got mine.
By show cans, who hasn't seen their cart?
No, I have. I can sit in and have. It's that big.
We got ours.
The distribution is going, let's just say, as expected. So we knew there were going to be some hiccups along the way, such as apartment buildings or this and that, maybe not dropping off quite enough carts. So we have gotten several, several calls, but I told everyone here at Town Hall, if you're entering the phone, and somebody asks, hey, can I still use my old cart? Or are you charging us for these carts? Or the answer is always no, or if you don't want them, we'll happily take them back. Or it's like, we're, we're trying to be as accommodating as possible.
But we can use our own carts.
You can.
Okay, you said the answer was no, so I just want to clarify. People can still use their old trash cans or additional cans.
We certainly encourage everybody to use the, the new carts, but again, at the end of the day, we understand if there's only one bag of trash and you want to continue to use a smaller cart and you don't want these larger containers at your house, we will happily come get them and then take them back, so again. So far, it's been, let's just say, as expected, and we imagine, I would imagine by tomorrow or at the very latest Wednesday, Wednesday morning, the distribution will be completed because they're, they're moving along pretty well. There'll probably be some cleanup that our guys wound up having to do, just either picking up or dropping off extra carts here and there, but so far, the, the feedback has been relatively positive, so.
Thank you, Joe. And if I may, a message from the mayor to anyone that's listening. If you opt not to use these new carts, the idea is, is that they are littered. And particularly for loose materials like recycling, it shall keep the, the recycling from becoming airborne. And it's one of the, I think, most important components to this. There are several benefits to it, but this is one of my, one of my favorites to reduce the litter that happens on every windy night before and morning of recycling pickup, so.
Well, regular trash as well.
For sure. And that's to be bagged, but either way, I, I agree, it keeps the, keeps the raccoons out, too, so. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Can I, can I ask a question to Derek, our Public Works Director, who's with us tonight? Joe had made a comment about some people that don't want to use the new trash cans because they're larger and they only have one bag. Do you recommend if a family doesn't utilize as much trash to fill up that can, should they wait and put it out for trash? Or if it has one bag, please put it out?
Clear it out.
Okay. I just want to make that clear to everybody.
You'd be much happier with the smell around your garage.
Absolutely. I, I want it, yes. Okay.
And it makes no difference.
Okay.
Right, you're coming by anyway. Right, thank you, Derek. Thank you, President Carter. Anyone else for staff? Okay, that brings us to our final item, Council and Committee Reports. I'll start with Mar.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. I should have said, I'm sorry, Councilman Dyer has nothing. Councilman Schofield?
Uh, there was a Planning Commission meeting on July fifth. What we talked about was the Town of Sykesville Planning Commission Rules of Procedure, uh, which is a new document, which goes through sort of roles and responsibilities for the Planning Commission. And it gets to some of the heart of what their role is in comparison maybe to what we're supposed to do, which I think is very timely, considering everything that's going on. And so the next Planning Commission meeting is on August first at seven P.M. for anyone interested. Thanks.
Thank you, President Carter. Sorry.
Historic District Commission, we did not meet since the last meeting, but we are having a meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, and there is one application.
Good deal. Um, before I go to Councilwoman Gurevoff, you had mentioned during our sign conversation about the military banners. And I've been meaning to tell you this offline, but it's important for the conversation. And I've been, um, meaning to tell you this offline, but it's important for the conversation, because I'll forget. The D S E is actually working on the military banners through, uh, with, with the county. And, and there's also some sort of grant opportunity, um, so.
So then, yeah, then I'll reach out to Julie, because, um, I had started speaking with, uh, the Post about the connection there to get the names of the families.
And do they have the, the whole thing with the contraption on how to hang it and all that's just, okay? Because these are all the things I learned, you know. I had no idea what it goes into, to hang a banner.
Yes, so. But go ahead with your Spark report, if you have one.
Uh, yeah, the, um, parade, I think, was an amazing success. Um, Spark participated in that, in the, in the parade. Um, the movies are also very busy and active. Um, looking obviously always for more assistance and volunteers, you know, to, to help with all of our events. Um, and starting to talk about ways to actually recognize, um, and a desire, um, from the, from, uh, one of the committee members to recognize and provide history of each of our parks and who they're named for. Um, yes, I think that we'll be starting to pursue more, more ways in which we can do that and
I like that.
Kind of bring more understanding to, to the town about, you know, who's where, when. Um, but we're in the middle of the movie season, so definitely encourage people to come out to those. Uh, we just did, they just did Christmas in July, so.
So did you have your movie on Saturday?
Oh, they didn't do it.
It was multiple days.
It rained all day.
Okay, just clarifying.
Sorry, yeah.
Will that, um, probably get, uh, moved or was that?
Uh, usually not. We, sometimes we just reschedule that. There is a open date, uh, that there's, uh, a possibility to move a, a movie to, but this particular movie, it's a Christmas movie.
It was a Christmas, it was the Christmas in July movie.
Are you saying you can't do that in August?
You'd have to find a Christmas in August movie instead of July.
Councilman Grassley, anything for us?
Uh, I will not be at the next meeting, unfortunately. So, uh, I feel bad that I'm not going to be here for my amendment.
Well, we can postpone it.
It could go till September. We could, we could wait.
Thanks.
We, we could have ten-foot by ten-foot signs, though.
That misses the point. I probably will not be here, um, either. That's my normal trip to North Carolina. I will attempt to dial in, but depending on where we wind up, uh, connectivity is sporadic.
All right. We'll take that in consideration with our, um, agenda building. Thank you.
I'd be okay moving it to another Monday, but I don't want to cause that.
No, I think we might.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that, if we want to do that.
Okay, great.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Schofield. All in favor of adjournment? That's everyone, none opposed. Oh, yes, we are adjourned at eight-thirty-three.